Don't leave.
Okay, welcome everyone to tonight's April 7th, 2025 meeting of the Village of Lansing Board of Trustees. Time is 7:30 spot. So I will call the meeting to order and the first order of business tonight is a public comment period. I know we have at least one person in chambers to speak.
Sure, can I move to stand?
Yeah, please, just.
Is that what this is for? This is a microphone?
Yeah, there's a microphone, should be a microphone there.
All right, it's nine seconds, right?
We're flexible. I'm watching the clock.
It's nice to meet everybody. My name is Joshua Jahani. I live in the Village of Lansing over on High Court Circle. And recently started wanting to get involved. And so did a bunch of research, made a bunch of phone calls and found the JYC was something that interested me. And I attended one meeting with Rick and the team over there, which I felt confirmed my interest to attend. And so I've seen to be nominated or approved for nomination, whatever the official words are, to join that. A little bit about me, I went to Cornell, that's my connection to Dithika. So I went to grad school at Cornell, graduated 2012 engineering. And my wife, she was in planning. We got married here over at Cass Park. And then we went to New York City, did the whole New York City thing and had kids in 2020, so April 2020. So I remember seeing like the COVID tents in Park when my youngest was being born, I have five and three year olds. And then moved back to Dithika in 2021. I own my own company. We do, we're a registered broker dealer with the SEC. We do M&amp;A, we do investment banking. We have clients all over the world. And you know, our clients are not in New York City, we just happened to be at the time. That's it. And then I decided to run for County Legislature District 7, the district that I'm in, since Deborah's not seeking reelection. So let's see my face again.
Yeah, our district number is changing with the addition of two new addition, two new additional legislators. So they, in creating those two districts, they divided things differently and changed numbers. So it's going from, going from District 10 to District 7.
Yes, yes, it is 7. So it's got a kind of an interesting, like sort of skips over part of Dithika where like Northeast Elementary is, it's so strange. They didn't consult me when they did.
Yeah, if you try to get into the details of how they made the lines, it would just drive you insane, so.
They don't look like lines. I think so.
I know. I know. But they, they had a long process. I think that they actually were sent back to redesign it or to redesign it at least one time. So it was a long process. But, so I have a question for you. Do you think, once you, being married to the current legislator, do you think you will have time to do both the JYC and the legislature?
That is a great question. That is a great question. I am committed to the JYC because the JYC is like now and the legislative position like that's not.
It's still ways down the road.
So if that happens and I'm blessed to have both opportunities, then I won't just drop the JYC. It seems relatively light touch, once a month, you're in 10, you're present, they do a couple meetings in person.
Right.
So I don't think it's, it's not like a full-time job. So I, I'm not going to drop out immediately if I.
Right, I, well, it's, it's kind of depends upon you. The, I know that the legislature would benefit greatly from having a legislator actually on the JYC. So you might actually become their, their appointed designee or liaison with that committee and you could kind of do both at the same time. So you could make that suggestion when you go in. Typically whoever the legislative officers are that year for next year, they will start that process and you'll be part of it. Just tell them that you're interested in that and we could tick two boxes at one time.
Perfect. Thank you.
And you would be appointed by us as our community liaison for the village. Still try to have a board member that would also attend, but that would be down the road. Probably after our May, our May organizational meeting, first, our first meeting in May, we set organizational appointments. We would reappoint you and potentially appoint another board to be there too. So more.
This May and May next year?
May of this year.
May of this year, okay.
Yeah, so it would not change. We would, we could leave you on there. I think they're three-year times, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
So you could be on there for three years, but just if something happens and you need to leave as appointee, just let us know as soon as you can.
Okay.
And we would still have someone there, but it's always good to have more voices in the room.
Yeah, and I'm nothing if not a strong voice. So, and I have control of my script. I own my company. So clients, they don't really want to talk to me at 7:30 at night. Most of them are in the state. Some of the California guys want to talk to me, but I just tell them I'm busy, I'm calling back.
Yeah, yes, like once a month maybe, so.
Yeah.
But it also, and voting member, so has to be, well, in my case, a trustee to have voting.
The voting rights.
Right.
So you would just be a consultant?
Is that correct?
I, that's new because I, we didn't have, but one and thought that all of our appointees, there was a time when there were two of us.
All this chit chat back and forth.
Okay, so things may have changed now.
In terms of quorum and all of that.
Okay.
Vote comes from the, from the village's right to have a vote, doesn't it?
In my experience, since I've been the committee, there have never been two.
Right. So we will need to check with them, find out.
Would you continue with the JYC?
It's up to the mayor.
I mean, I, well, I mean, my philosophy would be the more villagers who want to participate in things and then I could, you know, you could direct your, your.
And that's what I do anyway.
Energies to something else if this was covered.
Yeah, it depends on the mayor as he hands out his taxes.
And also you.
Right, no, no, that's, and I always ask.
No, I mean, that's my interest.
Right. So we will, we'll do the assignments in May, but for sure, I know that the, the village appointees to the committees do vote. And I thought that the, the community appointees or community reps also vote.
I don't know, and that's why I'm.
They do vote.
They do vote?
Yeah, the last two years, everybody on the JYC voted.
Well, good.
And there are four from the town of Dithika or whatever.
Yeah, they have more reps.
It sounds that you want to stay, it sounds like you want to stay on the JYC.
Of course.
I mean, my feelings about being on family rep partnership.
Oh, wait.
You're not on the JYC.
Yeah, well, I was.
Oh, she's not.
You're not on the JYC.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't on the JYC.
Oh, I see, I see, I see, I see. Okay, because I was going to say, only rep partnership, I'd be happy to let somebody else take my position.
Do you see how organized we are?
I see.
This is actually raises an issue that is a pet peeve of mine, which is that there's 18 different youth services organizations in Tompkins County, and by 18, I mean like there's nine. But it still seems to me like there could be some less organizations and more centralized work, and there could be some governmental efficiency, I'm sorry to say that, in, in that, in this sphere. And I raised it because I'm on a different youth services board for the village, which is the rep partnership, which is not the same as the Youth Bureau or the Joint Services or the Youth Services Commission or the JYC or the Learning Web.
And since all of it has been, since COVID and Zooming.
Yeah.
And parking and time commitments and if I saw these people on the street, mine might recognize them.
So you can get on the legislature and take care of it.
Okay, all right, that's, I, that's my actual answer.
I wish you luck because it has been tried before.
Tomorrow Joshua's probably, hey Joshua doesn't have that problem.
But maybe they just needed someone to show up and take reins and go, but if you can, great. But anyway, for JYC, you would be appointed, but there, there is a form that you have to fill out with the county.
Right.
And I think, yeah, it's like a card, that's a five by seven card. And have that signed at the county clerk's office, I believe, or sign it at the county clerk's office.
Jody can notarize it.
It needs to be notarized, that's why the county clerk, right?
Before I can.
Yeah.
County clerk, because they'll file it, you take it to them anyways.
Yeah, you have to take it in anyway, so.
I have a list of things I have to get notarized. I'm very good friends with the county clerk, going in there all the time.
Yeah, Maureen is great.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, thank you for coming in.
Pleasant.
And down the road, we'll have you come in and give us a report on your perspective and what's going on.
Happy to do it. I'm going to go put the kids to bed. Glad to meet you. Thank you.
Thanks, Joshua.
Thanks, Ron.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, now that we got it totally confused.
It is confusing.
It is, it's confusing. Our next order of business is to approve our minutes.
Now you have to close the public comment period. He was supposed to be his own line item after minutes, but.
Okay, all right. I move that we close the public comment period. Wait, is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment? Pat there. Seeing none, hearing none, I will move that we close the public comment period.
Second.
Wolfgang seconds, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, now we will approve the minutes from March 13th and 17th, 2025. We were all in both meetings, so we can approve them both. I will move the minutes, draft minutes from both March 13th and 17th, 2025. Seconds, were there any comments or questions, concerns about the minutes?
Nope, I got the corrections, a couple of minor things from Kathleen. We're good.
I read through it, I didn't see any.
Dispunctuation and commas.
Commas. Okay, any other discussion, questions? Okay, all those approving the draft minutes from March 13th and 17th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we can consider appointing Joshua Jahani for, to Tompkins County Joint Youth Commission. He would, like I said, he would be a community representative. It's not quite an at-large, but it's similar. I will, I will move that we discuss it and need a second.
Second.
Kathleen, seconds. Do you see any concerns?
Absolutely not, no.
And I voiced my one concern with him is that his time commitments, but he won't know until he gets into the legislature. But I feel like he would probably be able to handle the load. He's going to be assigned some sort of committee assignments anyway. And if they are, they know he's already on there, it would be a natural alignment to put him on that one too, so. Any other comments?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor of appointing Joshua Jahani as our Tompkins County Joint Youth Commission Community Rep, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's a little past our time for our public hearing, but I will move that we open the public hearing on proposed local law C, the tax override. Need a second?
Second.
Kathleen, seconds. Is there anyone in chambers or online who would like to speak during this public hearing concerning this local law C?
I can just make a comment that every year, attorney advises us to pass a local law to override the tax levy limit, just in case we go over the state limit. We do it every year.
Every year, it's an annual thing. And we've never had to use it, but it's good to have it just in case.
And it's on the advice of our village attorney as well.
Right.
Who?
Natalie.
But I did.
Okay, hearing, no comment, seeing no comment online, I will move that we close the public hearing on proposed local law C, 2025 tax override.
Second.
That's at 7:44. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so our next action is to, I will move the resolution to adopt the local law C as local law three. Second for that too.
Second.
Susan, seconds, is there any discussion about the resolution? It's pretty straightforward, we've done it in the past, dates have changed, the law number will change, but. Any other comments? Okay, all of those in favor of passing the resolution to adopt proposed local law C as local law three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so I will open, I would move to open the public hearing 2025, 2026 budget.
Second.
Susan, seconds. Is there anyone in chambers or online who would like to speak to the public hearing for the 2025, 2026 budget for the Village of Lansing?
Do you want to list some highlights for the budget?
Yeah, I'll do.
I have them all written out.
Okay, if I can miss anything, pull in, okay, Jody? So our current proposal is to keep our tax rate the same. It's been the same for the last seven budget cycles at a dollar and 50 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. The general fund budget for this year, 2025, 2026 is $3,422,273. Our water fund is $1,584,717. And our sewer fund is $1,822,700. Is there anything, any other?
Well, I was just going to give a general fund highlights. For instance, salaries were increased by 3.9% for the staff and the mayor was given a $2,000 increase. The sign shop behind the garage is going to be replaced. Myo Vision vehicle detector system with additional doghouse head for left turn signal for Graham Road to the east will be installed. We're going to purchase a plow truck and an auto flagger. Keegan Hills Road, we're going to replace the cross culverts and pave that. We're also going to pave Hampton Hills, Pembroke, SD, Cinema and Sheraton. Streetlights are going to be on Uptown and Craft. We're going to install a new sidewalk on Uptown Road from Global Park to Nissan and on Craft Road from North Triphammer to Ned Haiti Park. And it'll also be installing Storm on the west side of Janivar Drive with Craft Road sidewalk. And on the sewer, we're going to be repairing the saggy line at the railroad transmission main and two sewer suspension bridges and repairs in Cedar Lane, which will go out to bid. No big projects for the water this year, since we just did a huge dirt drive one. And we will be transferring $592,000 back into the reserves to get ready for our next big water project. And that is a summary of your budget.
Thank you, Joe. So we've got, we're going to have another busy year, obviously, so. Good things, things that are needed. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public hearing? One last call. Hearing none, seeing none, I will move that we close the public hearing for our 2025, 2026 budget.
Second.
Wolfgang, seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is 7:49. Okay, and our next order of business is to actually adopt the budget. So I will move that we adopt our draft or preliminary 2025, 2026 budget.
Second.
Susan, seconds, is there any discussion about the adoption of this budget? Hearing none and seeing none, I will move that we adopt the budget, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks everyone. The Lansing Meadows easements and stormwater discussion that was on our agenda topic, on our agenda for tonight is going to be postponed. We do not have all of the information we require to adequately discuss and decide on the easements, both easements and the stormwater. So we will postpone that at least until April 17th, business meeting at noon, or the April 21st, Monday night meeting. So just let everyone know that that's still going to happen, but it will be postponed. Our next topic is to discuss the tree law proposal from the planning board. We have Hapegrosi and Lisa Schlelein here to discuss that, so I will open that discussion. Anyone have comments?
First of all, you guys did an amazing job. It's been a lot of work, having sat in on many of those meetings. Do you want to just highlight the key things?
Yeah, I was going to say, it actually doesn't look like they made huge changes, but it took, it's more complicated than, than we had really realized because we're backing into a code that already exists that was done fairly rapidly because of some concerns I think we've had at the time. So basically what we really were grappling with was some of the residential versus commercial and how to figure that out.
Right.
And I think, you know, I sent around, or Maureen had wisely kept the last track changes, so we sent that around. We also had several meetings with both plantsmen and Keegan, which was really very helpful because, you know, they have a very practical point of view and kind of guided us on a couple of things, including we changed the tree units, for example, which is why I brought my six inch. And this actually turns out to be kind of a state size as well.
Standard size.
Yeah. So that's probably, but you know, we changed what would be count as a, as a tree unit because a lot of the little ones really shouldn't count, but these big guys, this just represents a good 20 years of growth, maybe more, depending on the type of tree. So we really were wanting to protect that. So we got into that and we tried, you know, to get into the appendix of some, the tree unit plus some planting standards. And those were important to us. We also wanted to incorporate, and I think, Ronda, you asked about this diversity into this, to kind of highlight the fact that you don't want all of one kind of tree because of disease strikes, which has been increasingly occurring with insects and diseases, you just wipe out your entire tree thing. So we got into that and tried to also, now you asked about, so our appendix has the tree unit chart in there. We also tried to, what else did we do? We, that's kind of the key things, I think, is.
You tried to add an appendix I, which is our solar, so you can't add I there. My other suggestion would be, those are standards that you listed are from the state, correct?
No, actually, I, the only standards we have is H. I were guidelines that we would like the public to be aware of and to consider when they're doing three things.
So can we just like list that in the text, that you, that there are guidelines in the code and zoning officers instead of having?
So we can have an appendix I because why?
It's solar. It's already solar.
Can we do like, can we do like HA or something like that?
But the reason why I think this is because when that code guy came in and he was talking about like fees, he's like, you shouldn't list your fees in there because then you're changing them every time. You should have a separate document for that. And I just kind of like, oh, okay, well, that makes sense, but.
There's no fees in this.
I know, but this is just guidelines that could change because you're giving reference to a publication. See what I'm saying?
Actually.
I mean, I think it's great to have that, I just don't think it's the appropriate place for it.
Okay, I don't know.
I just think, because like in my office, yes, we have laws, but we also have policies and procedures.
Right.
So these, I mean.
How would, how would we get this to the people that need to know it?
When they come to meet with Mike, they're going to get it. Or when they come to meet with the planning board, when you're going through all of your proposals.
So we can't go into the code, you're saying?
I don't think I would put it in the code. You could mention that you have guidelines. And then that way too, if they ever change, you'll have, you can change the guidelines and that change in your law.
Okay, I guess I would like, well, we'll have to talk about that.
Natalie, what do you think? Because you were in on all of our.
Well, the point of the guy, of making one a guideline and one a requirement is that per my discussions with NICOM, you can change a guideline appendix by resolution, since it's not changing mandates and requirements by local law.
Okay, well, we, if that's the case, we need to change, I think in the very beginning of our code, it says only administrative can be changed and the rest has to be done by law. So we might have to revisit that if that's what.
So I think we can look into that possibility or have it available on the website as a tab, a permanent tab on the homepage of planting guidelines for the village.
Because I don't know how much people may do a lot of cursory online research before coming in to speak to Mike, so just having it available in the village office might not be beneficial to a lot of the villagers. So also having it available online short of being an appendix might be a better.
Yeah, especially because the, the first one is the plant species list, which, you know how important that is, that we really want people to know what they should be.
And even if it's somebody not trying to accommodate the tree law, even if someone's just moving into the village, trying to decide what to do on their own property, it'd be a good thing to have.
No, I think it really should be because we have the tree planting program. So to have that there too is awesome.
And just to mention, I have this on my notes, that that will need to be updated.
Absolutely. And so we could, because I know there's trees listed in there. And so we could refer to that document of suggested.
Yeah, and that would be great. Instead of listing, because they're so old, some of them are.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
We have a category on our website, applications and forms, which this would not be a form or an application, but it would be, it would be appropriate for applications and forms.
There's also like an information.
I think that's where our tree planting thing is on there too, right? Under that?
Yes, because it's, it's a form. We have one for village publications, which can, can include reports and various categories. So it can go one place or the other, and that way we could change that by resolution and it would be in the code that way.
I do think it's a bit odd to put guidelines in the code because you, it should be more like things you are required, requirement. It just seems to me like more logical to put requirements in a code than guidelines.
Yeah, that was the standards. The standard is, that's appendix H for sure. And it's running, your comments include the full title and all of that, so we'll incorporate that. And I think there's something, I don't know what was going on with the fact that some of the links seem to be broken.
You know what I think happened? I think Mike moved those up. Now I'd send to the planning board and put them in that zip drive. I think something must have happened because the PDFs were linked to both of those in the appendix age, so sorry about that.
Links are looking for a local file on whatever computer is trying to access. It just needs to be made into a URL on the internet, so that's all it needs.
So the only thing that really, you know, we were, we want, we have this one section that we're still kind of grappling with and it just really is going to, we wanted this code to kind of move forward for some of the projects that are coming up, probably next, whatever.
Yeah.
But it has to do with the, it was, it was section B of the removal of trees from any tax part. It just, this whole 25% and within number of years, and we don't really have the staff to enforce that, so we have to really look at that. And we were looking at other, kind of, the other things that we have seen really do require a permit for many of them or some sort of thing. So we really want to take some time to look at that and what makes sense for us because, again, we're kind of a different animal than some of the villages that we looked at, or a lot of the ones that are getting on board with this are probably closer to the city and they're very wealthy communities, which we are pretty as well, but I'm just kind of a different thing, but, so we will probably, at some point, the planning board will be coming back with some recommendations on that, but we wanted to move forward with this as it is.
I was just thinking about that because there's that house, like you guys, where they just cut down that tree that's like, how big is this, like 200 year? And I assume she had a good reason, she must have, but I'm thinking to myself, wait, did she need a permit? And I was like, no, she's got 20, it's not 25%, even though it's, what is it, 200 year old tree?
Yeah, probably.
There must have been a reason and I, my guess.
It's partly dead maybe, or something.
My guess is that she was afraid that it was going to fall because, or else why would you cut down that tree? But I was like, oh, that was a jaw dropper.
I think we're very concerned about climate and stuff and nothing, deciduous trees that shade a house or a, any, you know, sort of building can lower. Any, you know, sort of building can lower temperatures, like, 10-plus degrees or more. So, it just makes a lot of sense for us to start.
But, like, hypothetically, if we had some rule, like, you have to have a reason to cut down... Like, the village isn't gonna fight with the owner, like, "No, that tree's not dangerous to your house." You know what I mean? Because it's just...
No, of course.
"There's a lot of wind around here," and, yeah.
And they're gonna say, "Well, it falls on my house."
Exactly, exactly. So, this... It's almost like 25% is almost better in some ways, because it's like... It's like a number.
Yeah.
Versus, like, saying, "Well, you can't cut down a beautiful old tree." You know, it was just too quantified. And then, there has to be an exception, because of...
That is the thing. So, you started...
Yeah, it's very diff... Very difficult.
This part, we've gotten this far, we feel good about this, but it does, it takes a lot, and we don't want to keep doing this, and we don't want to just keep... "Oh, yeah, we're just gonna make changes to make change." It needs to be really thought out, and what can we enforce, and what makes sense for all of us.
Right. That's always a...
So, I had a question on the 25% also, pushing that out. And also, within the three-year calendar period, what was the rationale for that?
I don't know...
That was in the original version, so it's not being modified at this point.
Probably taken from some other document, but we're unaware of what.
I think it's just in terms of, like, what makes logical sense for a property maintenance versus trying to avoid wire cutting for a smaller project, so I think that's probably why there's the three years.
Unless you just get rid of that, and, you know, still have to go through a permission process using the factors that you've outlined.
Well, one of the approaches is, you know, a lot of places have the Class A trees and Class B trees, and if it's a Class A tree under six inches, or whatever, you know, you come in and just sort of make an application that you're gonna be doing some of this stuff. And some of them then have a fee for if it's gonna be more, that they want to have, you know, some sort of permission or permit, so... But that gets into permitting and whatnot, and we want to just really look at what makes sense.
The other thing is, do you want to include definitions?
Oh, yes, we do, but they're not... They're part of 145-3, is that correct?
Changing any definitions in this?
No, we might be...
That would be...
Yeah, so the biggest thing... So, Part B will be revisited and revised at some point, but the biggest issues that were changed in these modifications were to eliminate residential special permits, not making a change to the footprint.
Oh, right.
With unintended consequences with a few applications. We want to alleviate that, especially going into the spring, if people are doing other projects internal to their house, or otherwise of a home occupation. And then, changing the area with which the depth of... How to define the density of trees in a minimum tree density. In looking at the applications that came in, we saw realistically, based on the footprint of the building, required parking, if it's a commercial property, how much actual space there is for trees, rather than just being an acreage definition, which often... I mean, with some, there was zero plantable surface, like with the VA facility in the mall, there was zero plantable surface, and Kugam had limited planting surfaces. So, just making those modifications, especially before building season, so we have to keep making concessions for applications where we think the current standard doesn't fit, correct?
Yeah, I like the fact that you, on three, that you added those general conditions. I mean, that was, I think, really important. I like the fact that you...
Doing it now, instead of trying to figure out a change to B, is just to make the changes that we have settled on and worked through thoroughly now, rather than trying to...
And amend later.
Throw something at B to make it stick and get it through, yeah.
No, I think the additions that you've put in and the changes you've made are great, and I like to see... I'm glad that you've got maintenance in there now, in addition to just planting. Yeah, I think that's really important. And the diversity is really important. Will you also have to go through the rest of the code for inconsistencies, now that those terms of language has been changed? Yeah.
But, yeah...
Yeah, that'll take time.
Also, I think this has... We want to be looking at some of our parking lots and that, just to be sure that everything is in concert.
Both on page five and page one, status of ownership. Why that?
It's whether you own the property, or whether you're a lessee. One of the things that we came up against, for example, was when... All the veterans, people in the Aldi, they don't own, or ole, ole. They don't own their property, so we really can't hold them to this.
Right.
So, that was what... The term that we came up with was, "Who owns the property?", status of ownership.
Got it.
Right?
That makes sense.
Yeah. And then, the only other thing, primary purpose... Do you want to include restoration also? Oh, I'm sorry, tree bank. Last... Six?
Six?
Yeah.
The tree bank, yes.
Primary purpose?
Primary purpose, Village of Lansing, tree bank. Oh, was there... Was this one where there was...
It's planting. Do you want to include restoration, planting, maintenance, and maintenance projects? I mean, do you want to expand it?
Where...
One. So, last page, on mine, is the last page.
Meaning for maintenance of... What do you mean, or...
I'm not sure that you need to expand out all the reasons for the code, because you're basically trying to say that typically, we want to deal with tree planting within the projects within the village, and if a project cannot plant trees due to restrictions of some sort, that there's an alternative way of having them pay for trees to be planted somewhere else. So, I don't know if you expand that to... Is tree planting, maintenance, et cetera, necessarily needed in this first paragraph?
Well...
Are you talking about D1?
Yeah, D1.
Because down here, you talk about...
Oh, the...
Maintenance of plant...
Under three, A, you do have a list.
Of maintenance.
Purchase, planting, maintenance, consultation. Yeah, that would include restoration.
Well, it also talks about maintenance here in three, A3, triple I.
And I guess the... Would the tree bank be used? Yeah, okay, that could use it. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I think that... I don't think that anything is necessarily required.
I think this is the area where I called you and asked about the one committee, and we took that out, because we didn't really...
Yeah.
It didn't work, so...
Right.
Yeah.
And then, the only other thing for, you know, kind of a law aging well, is... And just giving yourself flexibility in the future, to specifically name a committee, as opposed to using just Village Advisory Committee, such as Greenway.
Thought we omitted the name of the committee.
Not on my copy.
What? We had originally a committee.
Yeah.
But we got rid of the committee, because the committee... That was this one, the Climate Smart Communities Task Force.
Uh-huh.
So, the only...
That's not a big deal. I was... What I was saying is, make it more generic in the law itself, because then you can do anything you want in the future. That's the only reason. Village Advisory Committee.
As opposed to what we have...
Such as Greenway Committee. Because you used to have, like, a conservation committee, and you used to have a lot of things...
And the name changes.
Right, if the name ever changes, you don't want to change the law, but if you've got Village Advisory Committee, then it's whatever you want to make it.
Well, suppose if the event... No tree plan can be identified, but if it makes it...
Natalie, what's your thought on that?
Because they don't exist, then it moves to the next thing. Okay, so, you're saying, we should just say, "The Village"? What would you like it to say?
Oh, I don't know. I want your input on that.
But there's no advisory committee.
No, we don't have a village.
I wouldn't want to name something that we don't have.
Well, is the Greenway Committee an advisory committee?
Then it could be sort of any committee, advisory in nature.
That's a little too generic, I think. It's too vague.
Advisory Committee, such as Greenway Committee.
Yeah, yeah. We advise on where we'd like to see trees planted, and bulbs planted.
Say, "Greenway" or similar, or...
Why don't you just say, "Greenway?", because you can't have the same people on eight committees and have them all have all different names.
Interesting, if at some point, the name changes from Greenway Committee, and then we have a reference in the local law to Greenway Committee.
I don't think Greenway's going anywhere.
That's what I was gonna say.
Well, what it says, though, is, if in the event no tree planting projects can be identified by the Village Greenway Committee, because it doesn't exist, the tree bank funds may be used for climate change initiatives identified by the Village of Lansing.
Yeah, so there you go.
So, in a way, it probably would work, if you really wanted to push at it, I think. I think... I'm hoping that the Greenway Committee doesn't disappear.
Oh, no, I mean, I think it should, but if they ever expanded their focus, that's all, in the future.
And anything also has to be approved ultimately, because it's lost, obviously, by the trustees, so...
No, I think you did an amazing job on this.
How does the planning board feel? How do you feel about its effectiveness now? You feel it's much easier to understand and enforce, or...
I don't know, I guess you guys can answer that better than we can, because we're kind of immersed in it. But, yeah, no, I think we had a couple of test cases. First, our very first one was a residential person, and then we had the Northeast Pediatrics, who had no real... Not much space to put trees in. And then, what... Did we have one... Oh, we had the Beekeeper thing.
Oh, right.
They already had so many trees, and then we got into realizing that, you know, if you don't have any place to put trees, like, nor... So, those are the main things that we changed. I think they're good changes, yeah. Trying to say, you know, take out the parking spaces and all that, that kind of thing. What is the plantable area, really?
Right.
So, I mean, honestly, our main concern is for commercial projects.
Yeah.
And hopefully, this will be suitable for that, but we'll see. And as for your diversity comment, I think, again, that will be kind of up to... Well, we always have a landscape plan for our commercial stuff, and I think we've got this now, we've realized how important that is. I think that's just something that will hold.
I just wondered if you should stay in that particular paragraph, that the planning board would be the...
The final arbiter.
Final arbiter of...
Oh, I don't know. Of course, we are, though. We grappled with that, because even talking with the landscape... Because we aren't...
Besides Imela, who knows about the plantings, but we don't always have her expertise available to us.
So, we felt that, you know, if we adhere to a landscape plan, we basically... If you have a... You know, the arborist's license?
Yeah, the arborist.
Yeah, it's one of the licenses that they'll get the drift, and we'll just try to hold them to it.
Now, that would be a question for the planning board. The arborist, do you feel that the diversity meets the goals?
Right. It's part... Which should be one of the things we're asking.
Okay.
But I don't think we can guarantee that, as a board, we're all gonna be up to speed on some of the...
That's fine. It just says that establish and maintain appropriate diversity, I'm just curious, well, who does that? So, okay. But no, no, that's what... Your point is... Your point is fine.
Actually, I had read it and I wanted to... And then, David Fernandez was really very supportive of that. He said, "Oh, yeah, no, that's important to do," so we put that in.
Okay.
Well, the diverse... Especially with climate change, the diversity's really... Because of diseases and everything else. How about the density calculation? Is that in the... Where will that be?
Oh, that's a good question. Where will that go?
What, the tree unit?
Yeah, the table.
Oh, that will still be in H.
It'll still be in H.
Yeah, just I will be on the website.
Because this is standard.
Yeah.
So, in H, we have the tree unit value chart, how to calculate that, and the two...
Part two and part six.
Of the two... The two planting standards, that's it. Just those three things.
Okay.
And then, whatever we... Other things, that's where we have all of our plant lists. We have some guidelines, recommended plant list specification, and notes on the whole scoop and dump and de-camp compaction, and all that stuff, that's where the rest goes.
In your guidelines, are you going to have some examples of the density calculation?
Put that in there?
I didn't see it.
The appendix I was not attached.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think there was density calculation.
Well, I've got appendix I, but I didn't see the calculation or the chart.
The chart is in H.
Yeah, I didn't...
I was just guidelines.
Doubt, or...
I was just guidelines.
But there isn't, like, an example calculation in there.
No.
Was there a...
Yeah, I mean, if you have a... If they have a question, Mike will figure it out for them.
Yeah, I don't know.
Just go ahead and take that, Kathy, Mike.
Yeah, hypothetical would be very difficult to come up with.
Yeah, it would be. And it wouldn't be...
No.
It wouldn't be...
No, because it's a lot, so...
Every parcel is different.
Yeah.
And what is the next step, then, for...
So, we need to revise all the appendix that put in...
Right, yeah.
And then, resubmit, is that...
Put in local law form and submit it.
Okay.
Natalie's at work. They can do local law.
Earn those big bucks.
Yeah.
No, it was a lot of work and a lot of discussion, but you added a lot of stuff.
Once you got into it, it's like, "Oh, what about this?" It's just like anything, just...
Yeah.
Well, you can make it sort of more complicated, too, but it is... It is. Depends on what you want, that's all.
And it was really interesting, I mean, listening to the two speakers that you had.
No.
Yeah, learned a lot.
They're passionate about their work, which is wonderful. Lucky that they're in our village, actually.
But you...
Well, they're in our area, but...
In our area.
Okay, so, we've got our work to do.
So, this...
The 14th, correct?
Oh. But we could be ready for the next one, right? The 29th? So are we supposed to do that? Do you want Brennan to do that?
I mean, if you could just, I'm sure I have the latest version, but just to make sure, just email it to me.
And you have what Ronnie, the Ronnie's comments?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And the one thing we would need to do is determine a good title for both of the appendix and the guidelines. That would be.
I think we actually had some originally, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Just be sure I include those. And so then we can.
I think it was tree unit value chart and planting standards. And then. Part itself was determining tree unit value. Standards and the, the ones that were set up, planting standards, A, 302 and 306.
And those are the two external links.
Yes. We can send you probably, I wish it was the, no, it's not appendix I, but whatever.
So that wasn't in the zip drive that Mike sent to everybody?
I didn't find it.
Oh, it's.
Isn't it?
I'm not sure.
In print.
I didn't see the actual appendix.
Does it look like this? That actually printed.
Yeah, and then on the back, there's also the, the section. There was one that showed the planting, well, the planting list.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the planting list.
What'd you say?
Oh, the specifications.
Oh, it was, okay, good.
Interesting, I didn't see it in my list.
Well, the planting list, of course, is huge.
Oh, there's the specifications.
He was known, the planting list is on a huge Excel document.
It's a thousand pages long. So much work into that, it's incredible.
That was huge.
Search the folder that was clearly.
I think it was just attached to the email, so I didn't.
Well, I'm looking at his email, I'm looking at Mike's email.
I looked at it.
He attached a zip drive to the email he sent to all of you. For some reason, it's not letting me open it. I don't know why, maybe there's too many of us on here, internet. It won't let me open it, it wouldn't let me on the village website either. But it says that.
Well, maybe we need to just get a copy of each of the things given tonight.
It's just to get that done now. And so we'll go back through, get planning board one more time.
Right.
Kind of dust off and then to us and then we can review it instead of public hearing.
Yeah, great.
I appreciate all the work, pass the law to the planning board. That was a lot, a lot of work. On top of the work for the first, first law.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Start applying these things that just come in.
I know.
So in general, the planning board felt that this would help implement the law. It would be a lot more flexible, but much clearer also.
So flexible that it doesn't have some sort of.
That it, exactly.
So I, I just opened that zip drive and the planting, the planting tree species list is in there.
Interesting.
Yeah, and the two PDFs for two and six are in there too.
Oh, wow.
You probably just missed it.
If it's there, I'll look at it later.
Okay.
Anything else for this discussion? Okay. Comments? The only comment I have tonight is that after years of work, Climate Smart Communities. The bronze level. We had to attain a certain number of points by our actions. And we've met that number and exceeded the number. And upon the advice of our liaison with a cooperative extension for the CSE, they recommended that we submit it. They only have, I think they have two cycles in a year to review our actions to determine if we've met bronze level. So that's been submitted, so sometime within the next, next weeks, we will hear back. There may be things that we will need to polish up. If we don't attain the minimum 120 units or 20 points, we can submit it again for the next cycle. So there may be things we have to update because we've, we submitted them long enough ago. They want a new version. So, but we won't know until they get through with their review. Other than that, I don't think I have anything for tonight. So I will go around the table. Wolfgang, you have anything?
Nothing.
Susan?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Jordan?
Remember your water payments are due by the 20th.
What?
Water payments.
Water payments are due by the 20th.
Oh. Oh, you know, the siren, oh, sorry.
There's been rec partnership meetings this month and previous month. And they've been just generally going through what the, which their programs are successful. And they always give a breakdown by municipality as for usage, which is the kind of thing I always pay attention to. And the village continues to be slightly ahead of our population in terms of the percentage of population. Our percentage of youth is very, very close, but slightly higher. I think it's 4.3 and we're at 4.7, something like that. So the village, you know, youth continue to utilize the programs. I think the programs are well, well, well-liked and well-run. So that was the two big, two last meetings. And that's it.
Thanks, Carol. Kathleen?
Let's see.
Siren you started to say.
Yeah. Your siren alerts are working because I got the newsletter availability alert now as well as the, the accident detour stuff, so, yeah.
Actually, I wanted to raise, Ronnie let us know that we didn't get the beautification grant for the bulb planting. But John seems to really want to do it again. So I just wanted to just put that out. Let's see if we, how we hear from residents as to how much they value the program and see if we want to pay for the bulbs. It is, it's still a pretty good deal because the labor, I think I could do it without John and his crew. It would just be, if they just delivered the bulbs to the parks and just me and Bill and maybe Ronnie, and we could just pack down the ground behind them. We don't need John. So that would save the village some money.
When I first moved here, I, I ordered like 50 bulbs, right?
At least you weren't there, they did everything for us.
Yes, but you know what? I couldn't put them in because of all the rocks.
You didn't have a tractor. We had, you see our videos?
There's no soil.
But actually, you know, some of them do make it, but it's like.
We're close.
I was so naive, I mean, what did I know?
Well, we'll see how they come out. I, I don't want to say that we should do it. I want to say, let's consider it. John seems to really value the program.
Daffodils?
You haven't seen any yet?
No.
They're starting to come up.
Oh my God, they look amazing. Go to the park. Go to Marion Harteel tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, actually, I toured all the parks and I think we got the least amount of, what do you want to say? Like how many came up for how many we planted at Marion Harteel? The other, all the other plantings seemed to have taken better. I don't know if that was due to the soil.
Probably.
Oh, yeah, I actually think it's probably squirrels. There's still gonna be plenty at all the parks. But, um, yeah, no, they're all, all, all of the parks are looking great in terms of they're just starting to come up. But we didn't, we didn't, we didn't do the work. There was a Cornell professor with a tractor who did the work. That's why. I mean, if we're handing bulbs, yeah. No, we were just literally walking behind it, stepping on the soil. We were literally using our foot to go like this and that was it. It was really, yeah, yeah. But anyway, let's just see if we hear from any people about how much they value it.
Yeah. Okay. Kathleen, did you have anything else?
No.
Besides sirens?
No.
Okay. In that case, I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Susan, second. So we will adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:27.